Sam will do the song of the prayer and then we'll get started with meetings.
Okay, can I have thirty minutes from this slide that changed meeting as presented?
All right. All second.
Would you favor?
Aye.
Three other? Twenty to the amount, one through one hundred fifty three, an amount of four hundred twenty five thousand, seven hundred ninety three dollars, twenty six cents, the entitlement and payroll claims.
I'll make it up to the first one, second one.
Would you favor?
Aye.
Three other? Okay, it looks like we have a lot of transfers, so I'm just gonna read off the band, department, what it is, and then we'll just. Thank you for my motion, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Lit, public safety, deputy eleven, the amount of two thousand dollars to share consent pay, non-reverting P nine one one, operator, five thousand dollars to part-time. Operator, five thousand to overtime, county general, radio dispatch, travel mileage, one thousand dollars to I D X. County general plane commission postage, two hundred fifty seven dollars, fifty cents to consulting fees, county general commissioners, longevity, sixteen thousand dollars to social security. I think of the. Do you include the county general ambulance?
Yeah.
Okay, paramedics, sixty thousand dollars to overtime. When I have it, I could. Okay, that's fine, sorry. Get a motion to approve the amount transferred, and then we'll send it on to the council next week for.
First, all second.
Would you favor?
Aye.
Three other? Looks like we have some additional, non-reverting nine one one dispatch, your payments, eighteen thousand, two hundred forty nine dollars, ninety seven cents, part-time, seven thousand dollars. County general commissioner, so the social security, fifty thousand, King Bridge, cover the bridge repairs for fifty thousand dollars. Yes, that's all. That King Bridge is, what's the name for the cover bridge on the case? Okay, so no, I feel that's for, it's not Jason. It's. Yeah, I feel like I'm sold for that.
Make a motion. But again, those transfer, I'll say.
Second, would you favor?
Aye.
Um. I didn't have this on the agenda, I'm gonna rely on you guys, because I don't have my kind of weapon today for the email that Rod Baman sent us regarding. Grant money for a ban, it's using Willie funds, but it needs our approval before we're gonna hop in, I don't know that we're. We'll be able to utilize it, but, I mean, it's free to us. To have dollar. Thanks, Senator.
No.
But anyway, Rod was wondering if we had time to review that, so I sent it to you two, and can't to review what's even, if you want to hop in.
It's just to authorize. We go to apply for that grant, is that a fair search? I mean, there's no. Financial obligation or, he said all the companies in the county were the master guard, Harrison, C and D, I think C and D, but anyhow, they were. It's a ride-sharing program where they can get people to work, back and forth to work, so.
Yeah.
So it doesn't cost the county anything, so. I make a motion to. Uh, approve.
I'll say.
Apply for the grant.
I'll say.
Okay, would you favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, Brad had brought to my attention this crowd strike. Consent agreement, and I'm calling.
It's through the Indiana Office of Technology, it's a basically another layer for cybersecurity. Uh, some counties recently got some ransomware, and it was costly to them, and it's just another layer, and. Uh, I don't have a dollar amount.
Oh yeah, I do. No, that's not it. I don't think they're, I don't think it costs us, I don't think it costs us anything, but. We have been hit with ransomware, to my knowledge, two times, I think when I was auditor and cyber. Around Christmas time, and Brad did a awesome job getting the county back, you know, we didn't find out, we did have some backup, that. Um, things in place that weren't working, and we were told they weren't working, so, um, it doesn't hurt to have multiple layers of security.
Right, and we did get, they tried to attack us, just not within the last month, when Clay County got it, we luckily. We didn't, the software that we have in place did work, but this is just another layer to, if it gets through there.
Sometimes your cloud storage, they say it works and it doesn't, because dates are not entered properly and not mentioned. So that was kind of my view, so, do you have insurance, do you have insurance, so, and it did cover. Without having other people come in and redo, or we were able to recover all our work, I think we lost maybe two months for the North End Assessors' Office. Back then, but I think our financial system and the office office, um, we lost one day, because the company that we were contracted with has something in place, they had a backup. So we were able to use that, so, doesn't hurt.
Do, can't. But I appreciate it, have you ever seen it? But it's still, it's still safe.
Yes.
Yeah, the state stayed.
Problem.
Better. Brad was.
Another Brad error, I mean, Brad's word, so.
Yes. I didn't feel probably signing it, I wanted to go to the board commissioners, you know, part of the.
Commissioners, can I make a point here, I think throughout the state, I attended a meeting a couple of months ago, where the Iowa, Iowa chief is, is doing the instruction. And this is one thing, they say, you know, and I talked about it, gave him the papers, but actually, we're pretty much well-covered, and I think how we got by that. So anyway, I didn't tell the Iowa chief, and I think too. It's just another way of covering ourselves.
Right, yeah, that's.
I make a motion, also.
Would you favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll take care of the documents, design. You have anything else, then when you want to go to the conference. You'll need to, if there's that claim. Just brought to my attention, yeah, okay, great, so, there was a question on the claim. For Roger for twenty nine hundred dollars that was supposedly sweep the Liberty Solar, it is not, it was Liberty Street, the annex, we had to have an ESA environmental study. In order to do closing on the annex, so, that's been paid Roger back in twenty. Just want to clarify that, it is not solar. And it was a phase that we had to do in order to do closings, if anybody's familiar with closings of. Commercial, or. You have to go down a different road. Okay, department heads. Anybody?
I will.
Okay.
So, my, what, honor of you at the hood. If Colleen, I copy of it to. Spreadsheet showing some numbers, um, just kind of communicate with you, I'll bring this to the council on Monday, uh, back in July, it's basically giving those concerns about. Where we're at on our overtime, Colleen put together a spreadsheet showing the actual hours, four hours paid, and then she did an overall amount, I took those numbers. And put this into this spreadsheet, uh, what I'm showing on the far left, on the far left side, in the green, this is what their normal, like what I call normal scheduled hours, uh, they work. Again, their, what their pay is. Um, and then the middle column there, which is the red, that shows the actual hours they worked, and then the pay, and then Colleen put together the overall, like accumulation of what they. Throughout each pay period, as you go back over to the left column, down below the total, it shows you the total hours and the total pay, which would be the normal schedule. Um, obviously, there is a difference between that and the actual. But if you kind of go on down and look, remember, we were down two paramedic spots, so if you take those two paramedic spots, and that were available. It would've been an additional eighty hours, which is that dollar amount, you add that on to the eighteen eight seventy six, that's the twenty two five ninety six, which. In the red, if we had the medics, that dollar amount, twenty two forty one fifty, would've been less, but it would've been, because these people picked up some of those spots that were the medic spots that were open. So, uh, I did four pays, Colleen did out to fourteen pays, I'm gonna continue working on that, and have that number for the council and for Colleen. Um, my number, where we're at, we're a little higher than what I anticipated, but we're not that far off from that, of our total amount that we spent. Um, and a lot of that is because of the spot, the vacant positions that are open, uh, we did fill the two twenty-four hour paramedic spots, February. Um, then that's when we started the twelve-hour truck, and we were able to fill two E M T spots, but had a hard time filling those medic spots. Um, since then, one of the E M Ts that I did hire was just finishing up his paramedic schooling, finished up, successfully passed. So moved him over into the medic position, and now hired an E M T, so we have filled that truck up, and another truck, we still have one vacant E M T, or one, one vacant position open. So, so right now, you're just, one's fine, yeah.
And that's a medic spot?
It is, but thinking about looking at the E M T that's on that ship, she is going through her advanced E M T schooling, and if she successfully passes, we could put her into that A L S position and hire an E M T with her. That's all the spots. So, but I wanted to show you these numbers, um. And that, and I did it out for pays, so, uh, I think like I said, I don't have, I didn't give you a copy of it, but Colleen sent me a spreadsheet. Uh, showing, I think it was fourteen pays, and where we're at, cumulative on, on the overtime, and. We're not far off on my projections, but we are a little higher than. Where I wanted to be, um, a lot of that is vacant spots, uh, vacation, you know, when they, when individuals take vacation, you gotta pay for their vacation, and you gotta fill, you gotta pay for the backfill. So, that, there, and you know, had people sick, family emergencies, so when you add all that up, that's why those numbers are where they're at. Any questions? And then, and you'll see, there's a couple individuals in there that picked up. A significant amount, um. By the time, uh, they were available, and, you know, they were graciously out to work that. But we'll also see some of the other full-time individuals picked up some time too, and I mean, not as much, but they picked up some time.
Assuming you have some, um, things in place where they can only do so much overtime, so that you don't, you have a pressure on you.
Jeff and I implemented something to put in place, like trying to keep that in control, but at the end of the day, if we got an open spot, that's what we, that's the challenge we'll be running into.
No, no, my question now. No, I don't tell.
Thanks, the sixty thousand this explanation, back in March, uh, I proposed to. But counsel, what I thought we were gonna need money-wise, we cut that money back, but we also talked about. Because of the open positions, we could use some of that money, and that's where that sixty thousand's coming in. So, I'm gonna present this all to them on Monday, uh, there's a possibility that we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna need for the rest of the year, so, there could be an additional amount, I don't know that. What the money's gonna be, but I really wanna sit down with the council and talk with them about this, I did have an opportunity, said with a couple of council members that came to our facility, they sat down, they looked at our schedule, our scheduler. And I think they kind of got an understanding of what Jeff and I face each week, every day, when it comes to coverage on the contracts. So. If you have any questions, uh, new trucks, uh, we went back, well, we went last Tuesday to Columbus, Ohio, we inspected them, uh, we had a small pickup with one of them. They had to stay, they got fixed, and they delivered it to the county safety in Indianapolis, uh, they're there now, both of them are, uh, one of them is getting outfitted right now with radios. All the equipment, hopefully that'll be done by the end of today, fingers crossed, we'll pick it up tomorrow, we'll take the other ambulance that's being traded in over, we'll take everything out of it. Put it on the second new ambulance, should have it, hopefully maybe by the end of the week, the person next to it. The other truck that's getting remounted is over there right now, and they're starting the process of getting it stripped out, cleaned out, fixed.
Okay.
Anybody got any other questions?
Well, when we announce you're done.
I think in October, uh, because he got it right at the end of, so. So probably sixty to ninety days from that, so I'm thinking then, probably October.
Okay.
On that. All right, that's good. Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead and call now, because I can't say. Jason's back there.
You want, you want? Um, we have started grading the roads and policy materials for roads this morning, uh, just moving back into session this week, want to get some of those touched up, we have about a mile of loose anti-tire or chip seal, can't really handle that. I do have a question about Crossroads Solar Project over there, one thirty-six, I got an email from Colston regarding where these agreements are, where these plans are, not, not, there's a couple. Things that they're proposing, so, I don't know if that'd be something to talk with him about, Robert, whoever, um. Just like using one hundred milliampere to forty one, there's a time period that they can't cross, so, they're closing that, a couple of things, I just. Other than that. I said, the chip seal always done. For the district, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Tina, Dana. Tina and Dana.
Anything else?
Dana, I'll be good, Dana?
Good.
Okay. That's it, this chair here. Okay.
And, you know, something, then? I brought it along during, everybody, friends have comments, but sometimes.
I have a question on this crowd strike, isn't that the one that's all down there, aren't you?
Yes, yes.
And, we're not, was it, anything that they, where Ty, who's been, to do the interview with our work?
It's Brad back there.
No, it's not, and.
Crowd strike is the one that went down. Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
That, that's Brad, exactly.
Yeah, that's a Brad question.
Brad, exactly, yes, that's the one that went down two weeks ago, or, two weeks ago.
What is the, uh, what, uh, what is the? Crowd strike consent agreement, is it a? I've already voted on that, I've got any legs, so I missed it.
Yes, we voted earlier, it's just another layer of, um.
Cyber.
Cyber protection, we got a cyber insurance, the county does.
You never want to use insurance.
No, I mean, we did, and, um, I had to fight with the company, because they wanted to hire people to come in to do our work, and. We can do that, we're so much quicker ourselves, because we know what we're doing, and so I argued with them, uh, you know, a percent, can you do a percentage of our loss, you know, and so we worked something out.
Brad has, uh, computer IT Brad Keller, has several different, I believe, firewall, of their terminology. And plus, this will just be another one. To make it harder for them to hack into their positions.
Uh, main concern is that, are they involved at all in? Is it only cybersecurity, or are they involved at all in providing main service for, um. Let's say, elections? I'm, I'm hearing that, that, that cybersecurity. Is going to be. A, an issue in our elections.
It's, we have this.
And, and so because of crowd strike, I'm, I am absolutely, uh. Yeah.
Well, we would say.
I'll say against crowd strike, they, they are, they are associated with, uh, we should, so. We did, people that started a child strike are associated with the wrong side of the wire.
People that started, I don't, I don't, I don't, I think we didn't found, you know, in the paper section, we snuck the paper in, and you get the paper, that's what they. They don't know.
Okay, my question with that, and concerned with that, is what, why is it the election, why don't we just tell, instead of having a paper that gets stuck into a machine, that you don't know what happened to that machine? As soon as we lose that.
Maybe we can have a clerk come down.
As soon as we have.
Stay.
A, if we lose contact with, uh, a person, that can be accountable. And we have it on computer, hardware, somewhere, something that's badly in it. That can be controlled outside of our, and, uh, filtering, outside of our control, and I, that is not a good system, we.
We can have Patty come down next meeting and. Talk about that, because that's way over my, I have no idea. So.
There's too much.
Yeah.
Going on.
Yeah, oh yeah, I don't disagree with that, but I can't even begin.
Yeah.
But we're gonna have to sign a contract though, without knowing what's going on.
I can always. This, did you read the contract from the camp?
No, there, I mean, I. Turned off the letter, and this. It's like signing with a check, um, there's really not much on the dotted sign.
Through the state of Indiana, I'm, I. The state, they approve. So.
And then you're wrong, right?
Oh no, I didn't say that, I just said, good mistake, they approve.
No, there are people that have said it.
So, you're, there were, in, in Michigan, there was people that came in from the outside, that ran the election, the, the computer. Part of the election, and we were told that it's not, it's not on the internet, it was on the internet, it's connected, but they, they're people. Outside people, out, outside of the local government. Came in and ran the electronics, the, the computer portion of the election, and that's not, that's not, and so it concerns me when you say that they wanted to come in and do stuff that.
This was the insurance company that wanted to come in.
Not crowd strike.
No, this was years ago, they wanted to hire people to come in and redo the county's work, or their assessors' office, the auditor or treasurer's office, to. Repute our two months of lost work in the property tax system, the financial system was fine, it only lost one day. Um, so I could, I was able to track what work was done during that two months, um, and so we went from there, department heads got their departments to redo that work in that timeframe. To the best of their ability, a lot better than having someone else come in and do it, through the insurance company, okay, just want to make that clear.
No crowd strike.
We can bring Patty down next meeting and go over the whole process of all our, our local system works.
Well, I can hold off, I can hold off on signing that dotted sign, um, I just want, I thought it'd be to come before, and I didn't want to just do it, because, you know, I T. Thought it was a grand I D, and Brad's not here right now to answer questions, so, you know, even if we can get an answer from him at the council meeting, I.
I think it's what, just that short, that's just an authorization to, for the state to use. Uh, the State Department of Technology to use, funds are allocated for this cybersecurity program, I think it's exactly what Tom mentioned, from the seminar I took in. But that's not.
Yeah, okay, I never heard it, I never heard it reported in the meeting, so this happened after the fact, so that's back in June, so all of this happened two, three weeks ago. So that word may have been mentioned in another contract, and I know from the state, there's a lot of letters, I handed Brad a lot of papers, and Brad died right over this, he said, you know, we're covered, we're solid. But as you made it, he can't get Patty down here, talking about this election, election period, she and they had some facts that we don't know. She's, she tends to be, so it's covered, likely to be covered, so I think like Kevin and the commissioner were saying, it's just another layer, though we might know more about. Brad, bring it up, I need Brad to do that.
So will we find the, the theme sign, will, what do you want to wait?
We'll just wait, get Patty down here and Brad, and motion is still standing, it's been two weeks.
And they are, um, um, can you explain why we're needing fifty thousand for essentially, you're already. I mean, that's, there's kind of thousands of, and, right, there's.
Well, I probably don't base it that, but.
It's, it's be, it's due because, um. The, what we budgeted for was less than what we need because of the increases in the pay that the council granted to the. High rate department, the ambulance department, those increases increased our.
That amount goes with six hundred thousand dollars, I mean, sixty thousand.
Eight, eight hundred. One hundred.
Well, you gotta take, you gotta take this social security times their salary, so they can add it, that's what I'm saying, which would be over six hundred thousand, well, we're in the, and we're raising the big guy.
What are you saying, that's not a hundred and three? That would be one hundred and six five, because we didn't know that, they write, take a time of one hundred and seven, six, five, and that's how you come up with your social security, you have your, it was there. So, I haven't got the, there's such a amount.
Because they're not eight hundred, have no chance.
Right, and it's probably not eight hundred thousand, there is, this is, uh.
Probably things about eight hundred thousand raises.
Because, yeah, COVID times included and holiday days and you know, there's social security all of this. Anyone else?
I got a question. I'm playing here, we won't have a second question. We have Mr. Rogers are here. Is he determined what contractors could work in the county? Does he offer, does he determine who does work in the county?
Like what do you mean?
Work, okay, well, this is, I got an email, it's a question, and this is an email from Decker Drilled the Real Liquor Survey. What we have. They offered to do section markers, and they're corner sections. And it was sent back in twenty, August thirtieth of twenty twenty three. Goes on, and if you go to where uh they referenced Mr. Schumaker. And Schumaker says to send this to um on page nine. Basically, Roger determined who doesn't work. Is that how this works?
If I ask Rogers.
If I just ask Roger, he will represent the county for the commissioners. Now, do we have an unelected official from another county representing our officials?
Okay.
Okay. And then that kind of made, it's kind of scary to read some of this. And Roger also, he's, then if you read the front page. Um on the survey for the red lane out there, I don't know what else going on on another standard. But I had a drawing from a realtor that somebody had offered up. They took out all, and Mr. Easton French is not happy about that. So now, he said that they got quite a mess, but I know a couple of months ago, Roger and reckless were trying to get the county to take over that hot, that road. Did they get this all straightened out before the county or is the county gonna have to take a fix that? I I don't understand why we're having an outside, dummy unelected official make these rules. That's what I don't understand. I think that's a pretty good statement.
And so it's on. I, I, I don't, I'm supposed to talk to the president.
For the Robert, this for the commissioners, I'm answering them.
I said he could, I said he could answer.
For the, for this survey, uh Decker survey unsolicitedly approached the county and said, we want to do the section corners. And I said, I will get back with you because we're gonna compete it. We're gonna send it to four or five preservers and the ones that come up with the cheaper costs are, and and are reasonable, are the ones that are gonna do the work. Since then, we have, since then, we have, we have not made a decision. The 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 board has not made a decision to do any perpetuation on section corners. So no dollar worth spent at all on section corners. Once we identify that we have the funds to do section corners, then we'll bid it out competitively. And then Decker survey happens to be the most.
Well, now, now, that's not exactly true.
Mr. Kill me, I didn't.
That's not, I didn't, I paid off care, okay? There's a code that says, Indiana code thirty six dash two dash seven, five dollars for every reported document, that's a lot. So there's a lot of money in that account. There's funds for section corners. We just don't have a qualified or a competent surveyor to do it. That's what we have. We don't have anybody in the county, even they brought in a surveyor, if it's not a surveyor, he can't do it either.
Most county surveyors are not actual surveyors.
So you're saying you're the county surveyor?
I'm telling you that most county surveyors.
They were, okay, that's, well, I mean, I understand.
When you do corner perpetually, you have to have a license to survey your.
For you a licensed professional surveyor.
I'm not, I'm not good at the work.
Now, the next question I have is, I got, somebody's questioned you, here's another email from Mr. Rob Bannon. Okay, why is Rob Bannon requesting that the county officials fire people on the courts? I think that's scary. Go. Here's the email, I got it, you got it. Now, that's all I got to say. Why are we letting people in this county? I don't understand. And we did not have freedom of information because Mr. Bannon sent it to somebody's personal email. That's how we know it.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion close.